To the lie of the United States of America and to the republic, what which is stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockhampton County Commission Meeting on September seventh, twenty twenty three. In attendance on Zoom, we have the sheriff, Catherine Minin, and Major Bashaw. We have Jason Smith and Jessica. Let's go, Wendell. We have superintendent Henry. And that's all I see right now. I think others will start joining us in the room. We have Chuck Nickerson, Allison Kowalski, we have Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Godu, and myself, Commissioner Chericello. Well, we're going to start with the RFP openings, the Community Development Block Grant.
I move to authorize the Board of Commissioners to review, evaluate proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second. Motion been made and seconded, and we're going to. That was the one we've been physically.
I think this is the opening. Yeah, these are the fiscal openings, so we want to call the vote first.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, dental digital. Actually, a sense was in software.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposal, and return with a recommendation.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
And I vote yes. A reward for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Administrator.
I move to table this to the end of the meeting.
Motion can table is.
Review.
Second.
Second.
And seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Never. Yes. So we're tabling that temporarily. We'll go into Digital Marketing, Long-Term Care Services.
I move to award the proposal for digital marketing to Creative LLC for an amount not to exceed twenty seven thousand nine hundred dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Godu?
I know this is the last minute thought. Based on what's going on with recruitment. I'm wondering if there's a possibility that since we're going to hire an agency to do public relations work and try to reach more folks that would be interested in private pay for the nursing home. I think that it's part of the same issue that needs to be addressed is recruitment. Mainly for our and most importantly for long-term care, but also for other areas in the in the county. And I'm wondering if we can get this agency to incorporate as they're doing the work, to incorporate recruitment activity in their in their work because I mean, each agency should, each department should not need to hire a separate advertising agency. We should be trying to incorporate something that helps everybody. And I'm wondering, Jason, if you have some comments on that or you've thought about that.
I'm happy to partner with the HR team and Allison to strategize and work with her to kind of see what HR wants to do and to provide her with the resources and the contact of this agency.
Yeah, I completely agree. I think that working with every division on this might be beyond the scope of the proposal that Creative submitted, but I completely agree that I think that brand consistency is extremely important and, you know, we're happy to partner with all of the other divisions and HR from a recruitment standpoint.
Yeah, I think if we collaborate, I had the same idea, which is collaboration with HR and especially with some of the targeted marketing efforts from an HR perspective, if we can have some overlap. I know that this is the objective here is to target population, resident population, but I think there is some opportunity here to utilize that to as a recruiting tool as well for staff.
Bolster the entire county.
Right. And to Jessica's point, the idea of having brand continuity in what we're offering. I mean, it's a great way, just such an opportunity for collaboration and having a targeted strategy.
What comes to the forefront of our mind is corrections. They need, and I know it's got nothing to do with the nursing home, but they need the most boost besides a nursing home for recruitment of employees.
I think this, I think it is facilities operations.
Yes.
They have a very high need right now.
Oh, even higher.
Higher. So I think I'd rather, you know, if you were asking for recruitment strategy, I mean, something like this, I'd like to take that under the HR umbrella and do it countywide. But I would talk to Jessica and Jason about this company and maybe have it separated out for their branding for resident stuff and keep it separate for the agency piece of it for the recruitment aspect because it does run a little bit of a different path in my history and working with that. But if you want, I will go forward with that.
I'm a little bit confused because, to be honest with you, we have Autumn doing the recruitment side of things. She's been doing that constantly. This is really, this is more of a branding thing to bring notice to long-term care. I do understand that they can run together. But I think we have the pieces there already. It's my opinion. Now can we strategize? And I think we're going to be stopping to talk about recruitment side of things very shortly, but anyway, I think, and I think we just move forward if we choose to on the you know, Creative LLC, get the branding going, and then we can have further discussion on whether we feel we're excited to work on that.
To me, it's like bringing in Autumn to those discussions with long-term care, with long-term care and creative to so that Autumn can bring to the table. So when we're using creative, we're taking into consideration some of the branding for recruitment at the time that we're doing the the development of the brand for attracting new patient clients, right? So I think the the key is to bring Autumn or ever other HR team over to be part of all the conversations and the development of the brand. And, you know, Jessica and Jason and everyone in their team is, you know, what we've seen historically within this county, which is so amazing, is the collaboration between department heads. People really work well together, whether it was during COVID and, you know, sharing PPE or brand creation. I have no doubt that if we move forward that those, you know, Jason and Jessica will bring Autumn or, you know, whomever you think, you know, Allison, if you want to be part of that too, in terms of that brand development. Making sure we have consistency and continuity. And it would still then help, I think, Autumn have this, you know, with this sort of brand creation runoff, continuing to do all the drug work she's doing in the recruitment sector.
All right. Any more discussion? Should we have a motion on the floor?
Just about that. I mean, one thing that struck me about Creative that I liked is although the, you know, when we looked at the total cost, we're doing a six-month contract, their monthly retainer is is at the lower end of the scale overall. So I think if we, if it's something we, after six months, want to extend, as I think about this, looking at this both in who we're choosing now as well as who we're going, if we want to continue with them, they're a more economical choice for a longer monthly retainer.
I'd just like to see this incorporated and not be finding ourselves in a meeting for a separate social media agency for recruitment different from long-term care. So.
Point noted, Commissioner, and I think that is part of the development plan that Jessica and I were talking about with Creative in that when people hit our website, maybe there's a pop-up screen that talks about our recruitment efforts to click over to Human Resources or some more optimization that they would be recommending for us to strategize with their, with their background and their talent that they can bring to the table to really help put more emphasis on the recruitment effort, however that may be designed. But we'll definitely loop in Human Resources to make sure that they're okay with all of the efforts that are being made. But again, I think that's just one umbrella of it for sure. And then, as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, that, you know, the retainer, the monthly retainer, there are contract services that we have additional funds if the decision that we bring forward to all of you to continue that service for the remainder of the six months. But, you know, I think for the six-month trial, let's see how it works out. And I think that no matter what, we will see more utilization of our website, social media, and marketing and advertising initiatives that we'd look forward to.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, this is also a potential where, once we see Creatives work, there are someone that we could partner with in the future to potentially rework the countywide website, which I think could, you know, use a little bit of love.
Yeah, some.
It's a good point.
In-house work going on with that, so that's exciting. And that's, so, anyway. The only other thing I, my question is before we take a vote on this is where is this coming out of your budget and are you fully covered?
Yes, we have in the marketing budget line, there are funds for this that we have prepared and planned for. The total budget is forty three thousand dollars that we have. We etched out twenty four thousand for this, but you know, we will just shift a couple of other projects that we are working on because we feel that this is the priority at this point. So we do have funds available in the marketing line for this.
Thank you.
So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Very good. Onto consent agenda.
So I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable list total of we have lots of, are we going to make the motion and then talk about all the different?
If you'd like to.
Because there's a bunch of informational things that. So I guess I'll make the motion, we'll open it up. List total of three million, nine hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and eight cents.
Motion has been made and seconded. And any further discussion? Chuck?
So just from what I mentioned last meeting, there are two state bills. They basically sent out both the July one, what would have been the July one, and the August one practically the same day. And they have basically the same due date as you see on the list. And that's why that makes up more than three million dollars of the total, so.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're going to break it down in one of the form.
Hey, we have a slope.
So.
Well, on the issue of the AP list, obviously, yeah, because it has the two July and August when normally.
That's why.
The bill, yeah, but.
Yeah, July is lower than normal because the July bill, we get, the county, each county gets their allocation of the five million dollar credit that's set in statute as well. And so that is about four hundred and thirty thousand. So that's why one of the, one bill's like one point two instead of normal, one point six to one point seven million.
Right. Any more questions on that?
On that issue.
If not, on.
Wait, oh wait, there's, are we?
Do we break? Do we have more discussion?
Well, there's discussion about, well, I think it's worth mentioning that they, we did the twenty twenty-three MS forty-five.
Oh, yeah, I was going to do that next. After we approved the numbers, I was going to go through that top list to see if.
Okay. Sure, that's fine.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so let's go back. So the twenty twenty-three MS forty-five, the period ending June thirtieth. Approval. Chuck, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, so this quickly, this is basically taking our current year, six thirty, twenty-three actual numbers. This is a little bit different than compared to the other two MS forms that we already filed. The MS way six, which is the Commissioner's proposed next-year budget, so twenty twenty-four. And then also the MS forty-two, which is the approved budget by the delegation or county convention for the next year budget, so FY twenty twenty-four. This is the FY twenty twenty-three, actual numbers presented in the New Hampshire DRA's format.
Yeah.
So that's why it looks a little different if you were to ever compare it to what we might have in Munis or might have for quarterly lease or what have you. It's a little bit of a different format. Overall, good news is that we did not use any of the eleven point six million that was budgeted in twenty-three to keep taxes lower. And, and we actually end up increasing fund balance by not quite one point three million.
Yeah, I got that.
So now some of those revenue sources I mentioned before.
They're going away.
Are not going to be present.
Right, right.
Where we have a much lower amount of COVID stimulus monies in this fiscal year, and that's really because the state itself is carrying forward that FMA increase for the first two quarters as far as related to the county cap. And yes, maybe we'll have some FEMA amounts or what have you, but we're not going to have one point six million in FEMA
Yeah.
for twenty twenty-four.
But the point is, we increased the fund balance.
Yes, we had a very good year, so, yeah.
That's great. I mean, and, you know, as we look into the next, you know, with the next fiscal year and other costs, if there's over, you know, if we're concerned about any change orders with the building, I mean, all sorts of things. This is just more of a protective mechanism. So that's a great thing.
And we're going to come along. So the MS forty-five will go towards the calculation of the proportion of taxes for each town, right?
So what happened, that's already said. This is like one of the check the box items that New Hampshire DRA has is the last piece on our side.
Yeah.
To have done for us to get our portionment.
Right.
The portionment, I've already run the counts before, and they should be accurate within a dollar. I think we have a rounding difference of a dollar that DRA will probably assign to, I'm guessing Portsmouth as being the one that has the largest aggregate dollar assigned to them.
Well, they're rich, they can pay.
Oh, they're actually calculated to have a little bit of a decrease, aggregate decrease this year. But I think the towns have to finish off submitting some information to DRA. And then we'll.
Right, let's go.
Yeah, so then we'll be one of the, hopefully earlier counties out with our official portion.
All right, thank you. Next, we also have in our packets the five-weekly recruitment report. If anyone wants to comment on that. You've seen it. That's great. You have a comment?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think what, it's like the first, first of all, the first two-week period, I've seen that we haven't had no attrition. So like and
Doing a stock.
It does seem like we, there's a little bit of an uptick in both applications, responses, conduct. So I thought that overall, the last two weeks really looked encouraging.
Yeah.
So.
Looks like they're getting more hit. Autumn's getting more hits as well. The numbers seem to be larger than I've seen, which is good. So whatever's to doing is important. All right, let's, also in our packet is Indeed, last four, we have branding ads versus AccuData informational, I don't know. We have that in our packets, if anyone has any question, or Allison, if you want to.
No, I just wanted to expand on that. Autumn and I meet weekly and we go over recruitment and different aspects of it. And this was AccuData was something that Commissioner Godu had brought up in the last budget year. And so we prepared for it in this budget, but Indeed is the primary platform for employers for, and those seeking jobs. And to keep that market and stay above, they've now incorporated some of what you had talked about, and we had investigated on AccuData, but they've expanded it exponentially. So instead of going with AccuData, we're going to stay in with Indeed or do that platform and allow us to do two different marketing pieces. And it pushes out even further than AccuData. So Autumn was very excited when she saw that come through and we met on it and it made sense to go forward in that. So we're looking forward to seeing how that will work for us.
All right, great. Update, we also had updating on boarding efforts. Do you have anything you want to add on that, Allison?
It's just a way to really engage those employees or applicants that became candidates that have gone through and are now going to be prepared to come to our orientation. It's that connection from our end, but also from that department end. Autumn will get together with each of the ODDs or their managers who have they designated to try to craft a little brochure about the team over there. It just engages them a little bit more and they have that feeling of more comfort level coming into your organization. So we're going to spend a little bit of money on that, and I think it's well suited for that. I like the idea of the postcards. I like the idea of like that welcome packet, even the map, like this place is pretty confusing when you first get here, especially. So I think it's great.
Okay, updating social media efforts.
Again, I think Autumn, you know, having her go to some of these conferences, the one she went to last year. It just is broadening our landscape a little bit in New Hampshire to happening, what's happening nationally. She does want to spotlight different employees and positions and stories in the county. We, you know, as we're doing, you know, the different types of elements, our Facebook and stuff like that. I think it will add to it. And we're hoping each department will engage with her because it helps you and it will also help her as she crafts different ways of postings on what the job looks like. We changed all the job contents of our postings to be more community-based type of stuff, a day in, you know, Rockingham County and what we're versus, you know, you're going to data type, you're going to file, you're going to do this. It's more engaging to that effort.
Any questions on that? And then lastly, I, not really on the agenda, but I think we, all the commissions received a letter from Ken Wyler. That's not part of the consent agenda.
We can take it, I think that. Yeah. The, oh yeah, before we go on, do you want to, I'm comfortable moving to, I know we tabled the CDBG Administrator Award. I'm ready to move forward. Okay. I move to award the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Grant Administrator Proposal for the Rockham County Epping Meadows Project to Donna Lane for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the chair to sign on necessary documents.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I think it's, there's a huge disparity in the two, I mean, in the proposals, one was eighty-nine thousand, Donna Lane came in at seventeen five. We've used Donna, Donna Lane has worked on comprehensive projects. She's highly qualified and we have a very, you know, we have had a good work in the late. I feel very comfortable with this award.
Agreed. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's go to reports.
I don't have anything to report today.
Okay.
Sure. So been a busy time in finance as always, but I'll take you through a couple of things. We had that DHHS grant application regarding the nursing home, and they are really very finicky, asking a lot of questions on this pilot program. Basically, all of the other counties have opted out because it's so onerous and difficult. So and we've been responsive and thanks to Emily and the whole group, but let's the whole group, but let's wait and see how that materializes. The single audit continues in this ongoing, and last week you guys were all, remember that we approved the Whitley contracts? They've already, they, thanks to finance and working with Whitley, all, they have all the info they need for the Medicaid cost report. And it's looking like everything's on track for the September thirtieth reporting deadline. So that's all good. It was a busy weekend. I don't know if everybody, anyone was out for the holiday weekend, but it was busy and what?
I was pretty busy.
And Hampton, the good weather is like everybody had pent-up summer and so Hampton Beach was crazy and I'm sure, you know, and you know what that trickles over to. So we had a lot of lot of lot of overnight guests over the weekend. So it was a busy time. Right now, the population is at one fifty-six. But it ballooned over the weekend while it had some.
Hotel Rockingham?
Yes. If you can't find a place on the beach, there's always. They don't turn anyone away. And long-term care. Fortunately, we are COVID-free. There is a, there was, we have, one resident have SCADs and one staff member who had drug care has, also has SCADs, but otherwise it's been contained. The assisted living facility in long-term care was voted in the top three of best of CCO's nursing homes. So that's a nice honor. The final votes are, I think, happening next month, so we'll stay tuned to that. And that is my official report because.
Okay. Yep, it was busy, busy, busy. For me, I did talk to Allison. She was so busy that she didn't have time to give us an update, so I'll let her do her updates during the the conference. Update. Jude, as we know, has been very busy as well with the building. We did get the attorney Baghdar that actually has created the the, the award to escape from the brain, the easement, the easement, yeah. So we have that. I'm sure Jude will have more information on that. So, you know, we needed to get that going so we can move on to the next phases. I think things are going fast and various over there, and I'll let Jude talk about her stuff. And then at the Sheriff's Department, we had a nice write-up by the Eagle Tribune with Major Bashaw and Deputy Abel on the the meters that detect certain drugs without having to open up the bags. We did a nice article on that in the Eagle Tribune. We'll pass that along, and anybody that has any of their own social media, feel free to to forward that. It was a nice, it was a nice article. So I know the sheriff's been busy as well. So that's it for me. Let's go on to, okay, so.
Legal services.
Legal services, yeah.
I move to reject the proposals received for legal services for civil matters and authorize the chair to authorize republishing the RFPs as recommended by the Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
So, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Facilities operation, bid waiver request for Honeywell.
I move to approve the Honeywell International Proposal and Bid Waiver Request in the amount thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for the supply and installation of a new controller at the Department of Corrections and authorize the chair to sign on necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion been seconded. Any discussion?
So source. We've used Honeywell with everything.
Right.
Okay.
Motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. EverSource Efficiency Rebate Program.
I move to enter into an EverSource Energy Efficiency Rebate Program and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Motion.
I have two things. So Jude, is it fair to say it's that we could receive an extra forty-five thousand or close to as a result of the program? And it's, we have an application free or cost of like forty-six hundred?
That's absolutely right, yes.
So that's like, yeah, nearly forty K win.
Yes, and going forward, we'll have the energy efficiency equipment in place.
Right.
We'll continue to save.
So we're saving forty thousand dollars while putting in the infrastructure to.
Continue to save.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for your efforts. Thank you to Chuck too.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion two?
I move to approve an ARPA project under Revenue Replacement Expense under category six point one to fund the cost of Rockham County's participation in an EverSource Energy Efficiency Rebate Program as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
And so that's the forty-six hundred.
Yes, ma'am.
Or change. Okay.
Further discussion?
No.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Onto Finance Office.
I move to approve a travel and training request for a finance office employee, BW, to attend the National UKG Aspire Conference held November sixth through ninth, twenty twenty-three in Las Vegas, Nevada, in Las Vegas, Nevada, at an estimated total cost of two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two, two dollars and forty-eight cents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Only that.
I was just going to comment that the affair was pretty cheap to go back and forth to Las Vegas compared to some of the other conferences we've been to.
Yeah, but also.
I look at the money over there.
I just, I will throw another shout out to Leila and just say that using the new format, thank, and to the other department heads for doing, putting everything on this the travel and training request form, and it really makes it efficient to review everything. So I appreciate everybody's efforts to use, utilize the form because it makes it really very, very nice to it. Thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Human Resources and WINS, our prescription plan manual.
I move to approve continuing the Express Skirks Medicare Part D plans through AmWINS, only offered to Medicare eligible retirees for the. I move to approve continuing the express spurks Medicare Part D plans through Amwins only offered to Medicare eligible retirees for the. Uh, January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-four plan year at an appro- approximate three point eight increase in rates. And to authorize the Senior Director of Human Resources to sign the renewal acceptance as in previous renewal years.
Second, motion made, seconded, any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. I move to approve the walking pad treadmill agreement as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, which is made, seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Employee retention and engaging project.
I move to approve the purchase of various gift cards as identified on the memo from Human Resources dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Utilizing the category two point three five, the ARPA project funds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion made, seconded, any discussion?
I do.
Commissioner Foyle?
I just wonder, I mean, if we are, it looks like you're doing a hundred dollars to Strawberry Bank Museum. Fresh AF Bake Shop and, um, so local tree farm. My question is whether the bake shop a hundred dollars is like heavy. This, we did it, uh, for November weekend Thanksgiving. We tried to find a pie place.
Okay.
The closest we want, then we wanted to stay within the county. And so we found Kingston.
Yeah.
And they do have a variety of pies, someone, someone might buy two or three pies, then rolls, something like that.
Okay, you feel like, as long as you feel like a hundred isn't over, you know, like.
Pies are about twenty-four, if you go on a bake shop now, pies that can be, depending on where you go, uh, ranging anywhere over twenty dollars.
I just wasn't sure if we should do like fifty dollars.
Like donuts come bigger, it comes to how expensive those are. They are good though.
Those things are the best. Um, do, um, I don't know. I just thought of the country, it's a lot there. I, I'm okay, we do something else if you guys want.
Question, but if you, uh, you finish. How do you give those out? It depends on which ones they want?
No, so the, each month goes out and. Those are the ones I'm trying to get for the next quarter. Uh, we did try some tree farms, most of them are closed right now, but we have looked up and we know there's a couple in this, in, in Rockham County, but we just wanted to get that out there and then we'll.
Very good.
I just wasn't sure. Okay, we'll just go forward with this and. I could decrease it to seventy-five or something, we're just, pies or rolls. Christmas, yeah, Christmas, okay, thank you.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
All right, long-term care services, travel and training requests.
I move to approve a travel and training request for two long-term care services employees, JS and KM, to attend the twenty twenty-three FSA Compliance and Risk Management Conference. Hell, October second to third, fourth, twenty twenty-three in Fraser, Pennsylvania, at an estimated total cost of four thousand eight hundred nine dollars and sixty cents. As recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion made, seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes. Sheriff's Office, amendments to the August twenty-fourth.
I move to amend the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three motion to award concealable armor to reflect the correct anticipated approximate total of twelve thousand four hundred and forty. Four, I'm sorry, four hundred and forty-one dollars.
Well, seconded, seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Vote yes. Law enforcement substance abuse reduction initiative grants.
I move to approve the law enforcement substance abuse reduction initiative grant agreement in the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Share.
Second, motion made, seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
A couple of things. One, it doesn't look like the, um, MOA and Exhibit D. There was no MOA.
Yeah, Commissioner, those are out with, uh, the lieutenant, he's actively getting the, uh, local chiefs to get those signed off on first. Um, and then the state has the, the, uh, sheriff signs on that. That piece of it, I don't know if you want to review first, so what's your preference on that?
Well, the only reason I'd like to review the MOA first is just because one of my concerns was just the indemnification. Piece for the municipalities. I don't know, um, if that's, you know, because this, we're taking on the responsibility, we're indemnifying the state, right? For the grant, so how, or maybe, and maybe you guys have contemplated that. How are?
I think it's because the indemnification is the only people that, when they partner with us, they have to be sworn in as deputies. Uh, so when we, when we take their task force officers on, they get, they get sworn in as deputy sheriffs. Um, and that's how they have the, that's how we, we handle the jurisdictional issues.
Okay. So, but sometimes the, it's gonna be paid directly, but the payment can go directly to the municipalities?
Yeah, this one's a little interesting, so it's, we are in charge of all the documentation and compiling each month and sending it up to the state. But then the state pays each community individually. It's a little odd compared to other grants.
So personally, I would rather, I would just, if it's no urgency in terms of awarding the grant, I'd like to look at the MOA. Before we sign off of it, just for some of those considerations.
That's, that's fine, we'll take a look at it and then.
I don't know. So it's time. The other two might vote to go forward. I was just telling you how I felt.
Is it time sensitive?
We, we can look at the grant and then we'll send it over to you, so you can review, review it.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, we're not in a time crunch, they, they got it out in a more timely fashion this year, uh, so we're not, we're not as exigent as we were in previous years. So we have no problem getting the MOAs, uh, you know, sent over once they're fully executed inside.
So, uh, will a week be okay?
Well, they'll get the MOAs.
Motion made, motion table.
Yeah, so, well, why don't, well, the question is, when do you think you'll be, when do you think you'll get the MOAs back?
I can, if you want, I can even send you over the blank one then.
That's fine. Yeah.
I'll send those over to Leila today and then we can get it on next week's agenda. That works for you.
That works fine. So I move, yeah, I move to table this motion on the, uh, award of this. Law enforcement substance abuse reduction initiative grant to next week.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, uh, no discussion on that motion, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Table until next week. Okay, uh, communication site use permit renewal.
I move to approve the communication site use permit renewal for the tower site at Warner Hill and Derry and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Share.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Is there any dollars amount available, um, uh, relative to this?
Yeah, so I don't think they have it in there, but we do pay, um, I think it's usually twelve hundred a year that we do have budgeted.
Twelve hundred a year?
Yes, and that's reasonable for, compared to site fees, especially for private sector pay.
Yeah.
And it's all budgeted for.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, we're on to department head updates. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Jude first to review this.
Good morning. Um, I can personally vouch for Fresh AF. On, on the weekends, the, the line is out the door waiting for them to open up at nine. Anyone who gets that gift certificate will be thrilled, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, they're, they're really good. Um, I will be, um, putting together the easement as well as, we have to put out ten offers to test for abutters. So that when we're running our twenty-four hour well test, we can, um, test any of our abutters properties who wish us to do it. There are ten, there's only one well that's within the, the protective area of new well number four, but there are ten properties, so. I'll be putting those letters as well as the easement together and sending it up to DES today. They want to have a quick look at them before we put them out, but that'll be. A major step forward to, um, getting well number four up and running. It was really terrific how the commissioners got that easement turned around as quickly as possible. It was very, very helpful. Um, I wanted to let you know that we've been just kind of, um. Just for an example of the way things have been lately, we're trying to get some actuators to work in the heating system across the street. There's, there are hundreds and hundreds of them. Two years ago, we bought a couple and they were a hundred and eight dollars each. We got a quote yesterday for eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. For the same, the same item, so obviously, um, our guys are trying to find something that's comparative that we can use for replacement. Crossing up with a different brand or something. It's a Honeywell piece, and so it's a little bit tricky, but from a hundred and eight to eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, it's just. It's phenomenal. Um, other than that, we are, um, very busy getting some hay work done. Had a little bit of equipment trouble yesterday. I noticed the guys are trying to park in the shade while they're working on the equipment, because it's brutal working out there in this heat, but. They're plugging away at it and, uh, all's well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jude. Uh, Jason Henry?
Good morning, everybody. Um, a couple of things to piggyback on the Sheriff's Department, the, the drug detector unit that we have is. That we have one down here has been very, very helpful for us identifying stuff before you open it or before you touch it, so we are very happy to have that piece of equipment. It's, uh. Very good. Um, myself and, um, Ted Norton had a nice meeting with Stephen Harding, the General Manager of Glendale. Um, going over some, uh, issues we've had here with, with food and other things for staff and inmates, and that was a fantastic meeting and. So a lot of positive stuff came out of that and they've already started to make some changes, so I just want to give a shout out to the new General Manager. He's doing really, really well. Um, a win, we have a lot of projects going here, uh, Jude's working on our AB unit, still the showers and stuff that's moving forward well. I, a win for the county, um, vines, which is the victim information notification every day. Which Rockham County has been the last one paying for that program in the entire state for, and, and for state prison, all counties and the, the, uh. Call systems finally got rectified and we are now going to add it to the grant as of October, this October. And our fourteen thousand dollar bill or sixteen thousand dollar bill that I was not paying because it was not in our budget, Chuck knows well. Um, they are finding the money and paying that backwards and we'll be good to go and add it to the grant and no longer, Rockham County had to pay for that. It's a great program. Um, we weren't initially on the grant because it was a planting, blah, 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 and it wasn't, but now we, that has been rectified. Last, I would like to thank, uh, Lieutenant Norton, uh, well, last Friday, I think it was Friday, uh, I got a phone call. We had another exposure down in processing area of fentanyl. Um, inmate, we know he had it inside his body back and forth, keeping an eye on him. When he took it back out, staff went to get him, uh, and he panicked. Kind of threw it, it plumed everywhere in that cell. There was a lot of fentanyl in there. So we had to shut down processing again, um, called Major Bashar, he helped us divert all law enforcement to other facilities. Stratford County and Hillsborough County graciously said, yes, send them on over this way. Um, this time, we, uh, nobody got sent to the hospital for the exposure because we have changed our protocols with masking and gloves, all that good stuff. And we cleaned it ourselves this time with OxiClean and water, um, sprayed it all down and then waited for it to, um. Neutralize and took care of it ourselves this time, but there was a lot of exposure on this one, uh, in that one cell, thank God. Um, and just, uh, we'll thank everybody that was involved with that and it turned out really, really well. But just highlights again, we are getting bombarded with drugs and fentanyl and just like the sheriff is, it's seeing in the community, it's not going away, it's actually getting worse. That, that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jason. I'm gonna go to Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, let's see here, uh, the transition, uh, for the electronical medical records. For assisted living is continuing and going well. Um, this, uh, change, um, that we've been paying for for years and we're finally getting to implement all of the components of the. EMR system, uh, with our Point Click Care, um, integration, so now we'll be able to, um, do all charting. Uh, medication administration, pharmacy orders and, uh, order and review mobile X-rays, so we're really excited to get that moving forward. Um, in addition, um, the transition for Health Pro to, um. Oversee and provide services for the restorative program is underway. The new restorative manager will be starting. On September eleventh, followed by, uh, the restorative aid, uh, the following month on October ninth, so. We're looking forward to implementation of, uh, Health Pro, um, advanced services, access to, um, residents' Medicare Part B services. And so we're, we're happy to be, uh, moving forward with that. Um, in addition, the virtual dementia tour, uh, it's fully implemented and we're providing that tour for staff. Uh, in my board report, I provided a video, uh, so you can see the demonstration of what the staff have been experiencing. I also submitted my fiscal, um, uh, annual report, uh, so, uh, that is there for your review. In addition, as Commissioner Foyle mentioned, uh, regarding the RFP for institutional care, delay institutional care. Um, there was, uh, three questions that came back, Jessica and myself, um, uh, submitted a response to the grant writer, uh, Emily. And so she kind of tweaked it and, and made it really robust, so we're very thankful for, for that. Uh, so hopefully we'll hear some things sooner than later. Um, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jason. I'm gonna go to Robin Burnier.
Hi, Robin.
Morning, everybody.
How are you?
Hi there. Nothing new to report this week, just still plugging away, uh, working on the cybersecurity things, as you know, um. And getting a new phishing campaign out there and some more training coming your way shortly, so, thank you.
Good, thank you, Robin. Uh, let me see, anybody saying this, anybody? I think, anybody on Zoom, I hit, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go to Chuck.
Sheriff's Office.
Oh, go ahead, Sheriff, did you say, want to say something?
Well, yes, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You forgot me, Brian.
I apologize, my apologies.
Now, that's, that's okay, so I, I just wanna, I mean, that article that came out in the Eagle Tribune today, I just want to thank three U County Commissioners for approving that. Uh, for our office and downstairs at the jail. We are using that equipment, uh, it's phenomenal, um. Like, like Jason said, uh, drugs have started to uptick in, you know, in our area big time. And, uh, it's just a great device where it keeps our deputies safe and I appreciate all three of you. Um, you know, approving that for our agency and that's really about it. Have a great week.
All right, and Sheriff, I've got, um, you and I had talked a couple of days ago about, um. Some paperwork, I'm gonna, after the meeting, I'm gonna have it copied and then I'll leave it on your desk.
Yeah, that'd be great, that way I can review it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
If you wanna, if you wanna let the, if you wanna let the other two commissioners know about that paperwork.
I will.
Have a discussion about it, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what is the paperwork?
It's, um, it's, I'm gonna explain it, seven pages long. Some of the communities in the county, including fire departments, want, uh, want the county to put the bill to have everybody be able to communicate. All in one channel. Um, that's the goal. Uh, they're talking about it, uh, in some of the towns and some of the communities now, that's just a matter of burden to like, to the county. Obviously, it's not gonna happen this year because we're working on the budget, but, um. We wanted to, uh, have a discussion as to, you know. If we.
I think, I don't, I don't need to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Thank you, 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 you really need to have, you know, all three of you people look at this paperwork and then we can discuss it and, you know, we can discuss it. Before, you know, it goes public or whatever, all right?
Sounds good. Uh. Uh, all right, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with Chuck.
Um, as Commissioner Foyle mentioned, busy as usual, um. Again, we're, we're trying to encourage the auditors to move, um, a little faster. Um, since it's hard as far as sometimes not getting responses, but, um, Katie, Casey, you know, is keeping on with a constant communication outreach. To them, um, we're continuing on with meetings as far as regarding the Kronos transition. Um, there is a meeting that we have set up for next week, I believe, just a quick meeting with. Uh, one of our account individuals on the Kronos side who's, what, been back from vacation for, I think, a few weeks now. Um, so trying to work through some, some issues that we've had on that side. Um, part of the issues relate to that this is not a strictly a Kronos product that we're going to. Um, since Kronos had merged with Ulti Pro, Limit Pro, there's, there, the project that we're moving to or the, the platform moving to is more from that. Group side of the merger, so since some of the things that they work right now work for central, don't work the same way or don't. Work, you know, so we're trying to do different, uh, workarounds, I guess you could say, or different setups, custom setups to make things work in the new system, so. It's a, it's a process. Um, again, just, oh, and I did get a call from Cheryl Curly just recently. She was looking to have October twentieth, I think she had said twenty-first, but twentieth is the Friday. Um, as being the date for the. um, as being the date for the nine thirty, uh, quarterly review.
What, just the executive?
Yeah, Executive Committee Meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing nine thirty in the morning, October, Friday, October twentieth, nine thirty in the morning.
All right.
Uh, she's gonna confirm that with, uh, Representative Wyler.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, again, just overall busy and I will, uh, just stop there.
Okay, thanks, Todd. All right, save the best for last, Allison.
Thank you. Um, just, I just wanna let everybody know Occupational Health, um, Martha McGowan Lee will not be in unforeseen circumstances, um, right now, so she'll be out for several days. In the meantime, um, if there's any sick calls or any exposures or anything like that, they could call, uh, Michelle Malanson Schmidt today and Friday. She's been in contact with Michelle. And Lisa Hewitt is out today and tomorrow, um, but she will be, uh, back on Monday, the eleventh, and I'll work with her to see if she can triage any calls. Um, I will try to get coverage, uh, but I have to call COEH to see if this can be any coverage next week. We apologize. It's something that just came out this morning. So sorry about that. Secondly, um, the supervisor training kicked off, um, Department Head Divisions. I was on Wednesday, yesterday. I just want to remind folks, please, um, only, there's a list that went out from our office based on job descriptions of who's in a position of supervisory or management. Those should be the only people that are attending the supervisory sessions. There is a different PowerPoint, uh, slide deck that is for all other employees, so we don't want to migrate, um, regular, the regular employees with supervisory. Um, if you've identified someone as a supervisor and we haven't, we would like you to call us before you send them because we're going by job descriptions and content in the job descriptions. But it's going well and I thank you all for your support on this. I know the topic is dry, but, um, we want to make sure we have it so that we can properly be in a position to mitigate anything that may come forward on behalf of the county. Thank you.
That's it, huh?
Yes.
Short and sweet, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I didn't figure anybody, did I?
I don't even have any, no members of the public here today.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm gonna move to new business, old business. All right, I, so I have a piece of new business. I just wanna read it's the record. Um, this is a letter from the Rockham County Convention, uh, I believe. Commissioner's gotta leave me off again, but.
I think it's just from one representative, not the convention.
It is, right. And it's the Chairman, um, September fifth, twenty twenty three. Dear Rockham County Commissioners, I understand that you are having some discussions about the county providing daycare for the children of county employees. Let me share my recollections, um, when Warren Henderson, I don't know who that is, was a commissioner in the early to mid nineteen nineties. This was tried. It was a short-lived experiment due to the problems that arose. It, it was housing the buildings that now the Wrightland County Conservation District and the Rockham County to meet its own wheels. Since the rules require a teacher or employee in each room housing children, having many small rooms increases the cost of employees. Children were there for day shift employees, but the numbers were not, uh, constant or consistent. Thus, there were many days that we had more employees than were required. The children were left off at all hours. County endeavored to keep the cost affordable for our employees, which meant that we lost a lot of money. In short, I do not believe that we have a suitable building on campus. You should not start up a program without a firm commitment from the employees on how many children, how many children hours they are willing to pay for and schedule for those hours. Many daycare operations make parents pay for the quote unquote, contract hours, whether they are used or not. Otherwise, you will lose money. I doubt the employees will give up their present day daycare situation due to the uncertainty and untested program. I advised against trying this for all the above reasons sincerely, uh, Ken, Kenneth L. Wyler, Chairman of the County Delegation. I just felt, since you said that, we needed to, um, leave that on the record. And, uh, we'll leave it at that. Any, anything else as far as we don't have any money finishing the conference on the public, so. All right, we're gonna be going into non-public session and we have two of them. I don't know how you want to, which one first?
Uh, well, what's, uh, how about Jason Henry? Correct. Okay, I move to enter into non-public pursuant to not ninety-one, I say ninety-one, eight, home, three. Uh, uh, three, section two legal and, um, invite Jason Henry to. Come on down.
Motion's been made, don't go in public. Do you have a second?
Sir.
Second. Um, we're gonna be going into non-public on, on the motion, Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Nice day, everybody. Thank you very much for your participation. And just.
Yes, we had, uh, three non-publics, um, uh, with respect to, uh, the first non-public. Um, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because it could re- render a proposed action ineffective. And with respect to the other two non-public items, I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely because they could affect adversity, reputation of a person other than this one.
Second. Motion made and seconded, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foil?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, so, uh, we will be going into non-meeting, I believe.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, we're gonna make a motion to adjourn this meeting and we'll be going into non-meets.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those are famous, AI.
Hi.